Agenda, please complete a blue speaker card and give it to the officer in the back of the room. Items that are not on the agenda are heard at the end of the voting meeting. Glendale has seven city council members. Mayor Jerry Wires, Vice Mayor Joyce Clark of the Yucca District, Councilmember Jamie Aldama of the Ocatillo District, Councilmember Ian Hugh of the Cactus District, Councilmember Bart Turner of the Beryl District, Councilmember Ray Malnor of the Saguaro District, and Councilmember Lauren Tomachoff of the Choya District. This meeting is streaming live on Glendale's Facebook and YouTube pages and the city's cable television station, Glendale Channel 11. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening and welcome to the Glendale City Council Meeting of November 28th, 2023. This meeting is called to order. I will now conduct an attendance roll call. Councilmembers, please signify by saying here or present. Councilmember Aldama.
Present.
Councilmember you.
Here.
Councilmember Malnor.
Present.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
Here.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Mayor Wires has an excused absence, and I, Joyce Clark, am present.
Point of order.
The next two items on our agenda are the invocation.
Point of order.
Did I not call you?
No, you did. Thank you.
I'm sorry. You weren't on the list. Isn't that awful? Councilmember Turner, are you here?
You did call me, and I did say yes. My point of order is about something different.
Oh, okay.
And I hate to bring it up, especially at this point, but it's bugged me for a while. I don't believe the Chair has the right to excuse absences. I think that's a power that belongs to the council as a whole, particularly given the consequences of unexcused absences. So I think if we're going to be excusing absences, it needs to be by vote of the council.
Well, I will say this. Since you brought this up, and it's not an issue that I'm familiar with, or I think any of the other council members are familiar with, I will not entertain your request at this time, but I think we will discuss it with the city attorney, and if that needs to be instituted, it will be at future meetings. Thank you.
Well, the attorney may have something to share with us. I don't know what the attorney's opinion will be on this. We haven't discussed it.
I just don't want to turn this into a... Yes?
Vice Mayor and council. It would probably be best to have a discussion about it further. And just right off the top of my head, one reason being is why a council member may not be in attendance, maybe for reasons that you don't want to announce publicly. And so if you intend to have that kind of discussion, I think we need to, as a whole, have a greater discussion about the concept of excused and unexcused absences. So if you don't mind, I will consider this a request to meet with you after, so that we can have a further discussion about it in two weeks.
Okay. I think I'll concede to that at this time, but I do think it's an important issue for us to discuss. And I had no intention of discussing why, you know, one may or may not be here. I'm not trying to pry into, publicly try into personal business, but if an absence is going to be excused, it should be, you know, for a valuable reason.
I think it's a perfectly legitimate question raised, but I don't think it can be decided right at this minute, and it requires further discussion. Thank you.
I shall wait then.
All right.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. The next two items on our agenda are the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Today's invocation will be delivered by Councilmember Ray Malnor of the Saguaro District. I bet you you didn't know that was capping. No, you didn't know.
He's always...
Men, if appropriate, would you please remove your hats and also silence your cellphones? Please stand for the invocation and remain standing, because after the invocation is delivered, we will do the pledge of allegiance. If you would stand, please.
Our gracious Father who art in heaven, as we bow our heads before you this evening at this council meeting, we're indeed grateful that we can be here this evening, that we can discuss the issues and affairs of the city of Glendale. We're grateful for this great country in which we live, and for the time that we've enjoyed as we've given thanks into this past holiday season. We thank thee for the opportunities we have to serve in our capacities, and we pray for thy blessings and to watch over each and every one of the members of this council, and also the city and its employees, and all those who serve us, the public. Again, we pray for thy assistance as we make decisions tonight, that we be wise, prudent, and that we'll be able to carry forth the affairs of the city. In these things we pray, in thy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, one nation, and You may be seated. Next on the agenda is a consideration of the minutes from the October 24th, 2023 voting meeting. Councilmembers, do you have any corrections or additions to those minutes? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the October 24th, 2023 minutes?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I move to reapprove the minutes of the October 24th, 2023 voting meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. That's been moved by Councilmember you and approved, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Now, normally at this point, we would be, I would be reading a proclamation, but guess what? It's not here yet. It's a proclamation for employee gratitude. So the minute the proclamation gets delivered here, we'll do the proclamation. So those city employees who were here for that, you're gonna have to hang on for a while till we get it. All right. We will then move on to boards and commissions and other bodies. Councilmember Malnor, do you have some recommendations?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I move that we make the following appointments to boards and commissions. I move that we, for the Arts Commission, Paige Hyde as Cactus, from Cactus District, term expiring 1/31/2025. That's the Arts Commission. And the Citizens Transportation Oversight Commission, Norma Cuevas from Yucca District, expiring 1/31/2025.
Are either of those people here tonight? Raise your hand. Good. Would you join me at the dial?
We gotta vote. Let's vote on it first. We gotta vote on it. Vice Mayor.
I'm sorry. I'm so excited to get this meeting over with. I'm jumping ahead of myself. At this point, we need a motion.
No, just a vote.
Vote.
Pardon?
We already gave you the motion.
Okay.
I was the second.
Did we get a second?
We don't have a second.
Yes. I second it.
Councilmember Hugh was the second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, that is approved unanimously. I hope they didn't give you cards either. Okay. So you're gonna have to listen to what I have to say and repeat it, okay? Aye, and then state your name.
Aye, Paige Hyde. Aye, Norma Cuevas.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance...
And allegiance.
To the same...
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies...
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic...
Foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully...
And that I will faithfully...
And impartially...
And impartially.
Discharge the duties...
Discharge the duties.
Of my office...
Of my office.
To the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Well, let's see what else I can mess up this evening. We will now move to our consent agenda, and consent agenda items are of a routine nature or have been previously studied by the city council at a workshop session. They are intended to be acted upon in one motion by the council. Now, one item has been asked to be pulled, and that is item 15. Is that correct, Councilmember Turner?
Yes, please.
Do you need discussion on the item?
Yes, I'd like a presentation and...
All right. So we will move forward with approving consent agenda items four through 16 and 18 through 32. Do I have a motion?
Vice Mayor, I move that we... Can I clarify? It's item 15 that's polled, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move that we approve items four through 14...
16. 14, you're right.
14, okay. And items 16 through 32.
Very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tomachoff, seconded by Councilmember you, to approve items four through 14 and 16 through 32. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? No, the motion is carried unanimously. Ms. Bauer, would you introduce item 15?
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Duramax Holdings for the purchase of residential refuse and recycling containers.
Good evening, Ms. Wotenko. Would you make your presentation, please?
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. This is a request for city council authorize the city manager to enter into a linking agreement with Duramax. Duramax is one of two companies we purchase residential refuse and recycling containers for. These are the 90-gallon containers we provide to the residents. It was auto. They've changed their name to Duramax, which is why we're coming forward with it. We replace about 8,000 or 9,000 containers annually. This is to replace containers that are broken, otherwise misplaced, or for new homes. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Turner.
Right. Thank you, Ms. Wotenko. Back in February, we had a workshop where we discussed the conversion from the existing green recycling containers over to the blue barrels. And having reviewed the minutes, the consensus at that time was to go ahead and change them citywide if there was, if we were to receive a grant, the federal grant that had been applied for. And if not, then, as I understand it, it was option B, which was to replace all the green barrels to blue barrels through attrition. As green barrels came out of service, blue barrels would replace them over a period of estimated 15 to 20 years. It's my understanding that we didn't receive the grant, so this contract that we're asked to approve tonight would include purchasing blue barrels to replace the green barrels based on attrition. Is that correct?
Vice Mayor and council members, Councilmember Turner, you are correct.
Okay. So the, everybody knows that I think that that's a mistake for our neighborhoods that aren't HOAs, and so I just would like to ask the council to not go down this path. But I already understand we've had a workshop and reached a consensus to go down this path. I just wanna, you know, I don't know what else I can do to keep this from happening other than vote no, which I'll have a chance to do in just a moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Turner. Can I get a motion on consent agenda item 15?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I move we enter into the linking agreement with Duramax Holdings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Tomachoff, seconded by Councilmember you. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All those against, please vote nay.
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 Motion carries five to two. Thank you. Four to two. I'll get it right before the union's over. Ms. Bauer, would you please read consent resolution items 33 through 46 by number and title, and you can take a breath once in a while.
Item 33, resolution number R-23-88, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of El Mirage as one of the West Valley Regional Veterans Court participating municipalities. Item 34, resolution number R-23-89, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding between Maricopa County, Arizona, and the city of Glendale, Arizona. Item 35, resolution number R-23-90, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the city manager to execute and accept a property use license from Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District for the intersection located at 61st and Olive Avenues. Item 36, resolution number R-23-91, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient grant agreement and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the 2023 Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant Program Award for the Glendale Fire Department MMRS/MASSS Casualty Sustainment Project Agreement Number 230203-01 in the amount of $60,440 on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department. Item 37, resolution number R-23-92, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the 2023 Arizona Department of Homeland Security Grant Program Award for the 2023 Urban Area Security Initiative Glendale Fire Department RRT Sustainment Agreement Number 230808-01 in the amount of $75,725 on behalf of the Glendale Fire Department. Item 38, resolution number R-23-93, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement Number 23-AZDOHS-HSGP-230204-01 with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the state Homeland Security Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $73,691 for the Glendale Police Explosive Devices Mitigation Project. Item 39, resolution number R-23-94, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a highway safety contract Number 2024-PTS-026 with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $79,000 for personnel services and employee-related expenses for the Glendale Police Department Step Enforcement Project. Item 40, resolution number R-23-95, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a subrecipient agreement Number 23-AZDOHS-HSGP-230809-01 with the Arizona Department of Homeland Security and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Urban Area Security Initiative Grant Award in the approximate amount of $80,223 for the Glendale Police 2023 UASI RRT Sustainment. Resolution number R-23-96, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a highway safety contract Number 2024-405G-004 with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $55,000 for personnel services, employee-related expenses, and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department Pedestrian and Bicycle Safety Enforcement Project. Item 42, resolution number R-23-97, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a highway safety contract Number 2024-405D-017 with the Arizona Governor's Office of Highway Safety and authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the grant award in the approximate amount of $79,799 for personnel services, employee-related expenses, and materials and supplies for the Glendale Police Department DUI Impaired Driving Enforcement Project. Item 43, resolution number R-23-98, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a subgrant agreement Number 2023-200 with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Victims of Crime Act Victim Assistance Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $185,372, and approving matching funds in the amount of $46,343 for the Glendale Police Department Victim Assistance Crisis Intervention After Hours Project. Item 44, resolution number R-23-99, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into a subgrant agreement Number 2023-199 with the Arizona Department of Public Safety, authorizing the acceptance and expenditure of the Victims of Crime Act Victim Assistance Grant Program Award in the approximate amount of $302,827, and approving matching funds in the amount of $75,707 for the Glendale Police Department Crime Victim Services Project. Item 45, resolution number R-23-100, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of a memorandum of understanding between the Glendale Police Department and the city of Peoria Police Department for participation in the National Integrated Ballistic Information Network for the purpose of enhancing the efforts to combat, link, and solve violent crime involving firearms. Item 46, resolution number R-23-101, a resolution of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing and directing the entering into of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Peoria for defining roadway signing and pavement marking maintenance. And that concludes the consent resolutions.
Well done. Are there any speaker cards for any of the consent resolution items?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve consent resolution items 33 through 46?
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
Motion to approve items 33 through 46 on the consent resolution agenda.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Aldama, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff to approve the recommendation. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We will move on to bids and contracts. Ms. Bauer, please introduce item 47.
Authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Emergency Environmental Services LLC for 62 Myrtle post-fire cleanup services.
Councilmembers, are there any questions about this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 47?
Mayor, or Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve item number 47, authorization to enter into a linking agreement with Emergency by Environmental Services.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilmember Malnor, and a second by Councilmember Aldama. I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Chair votes nay, but I will explain my nay vote on this. An all consent agenda, items on the agenda tonight are five-year contracts. As is my habit and practice, I do not support five-year contracts. They do not allow for council oversight when council terms are only four years long. So the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, can you please introduce item 48?
Authorization to enter into an agreement with CNM Communications LLC for two-way digital mobile and handheld radios and digital repeater airtime services.
Councilmembers, are there any questions about this item? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 48?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I move we enter into the agreement with CNM Communications, Inc.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Turner, Turner. Councilmember Tomachoff, excuse me, seconded by Councilmember you. All those in favor? No, I have to do a roll call vote. I will do a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Chair votes nay, but motion carries. Ms. Bauer, will you introduce item 49?
Authorization for the award of proposal number 24-22, and for the city manager to enter into an agreement with First Strategic LLC in an amount not to exceed $400,000 for comprehensive state legislative representation and communication consulting services.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 49?
Motion to approve item number 49.
Second?
Second.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Aldama, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. All those, roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, will you introduce item 50?
Award of RFP 24-08, and authorization to enter into a professional services agreement with Heinfeld Meach and Company, PC, for the Glendale Onboard Transportation Program
Okay. Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 50?
Yes, Vice Mayor, I move to reapprove item 50.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember you, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. I'll now do a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, can you please introduce item 51?
Award of Invitation for Bid 24-17, and authorization to enter into an agreement with Quality Environmental Containers, Inc., for the purchase of sample bottles.
Councilmembers, are there any questions? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve item 51?
Vice Mayor, I move that we award bid 24-17 and authorize the city manager to enter into the described agreement.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Turner, seconded by Councilmember Tomachoff. I will now call a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachoff?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner?
Aye.
Chair votes nay. Motion carries. Ms. Bauer, will you introduce? No, that was the end of the... We'll now move on to land development actions. Ms. Bauer, will you please introduce item number 52?
Ordinance number O-23-55, an ordinance of the council of the city of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Glendale, Arizona by approving Zoning Text Amendment ZTA 23-01, amending the zoning ordinance, Article 6, Section 6.806, parking Glendale Center Line Overlay District, amending the zoning ordinance as follows, providing for severability, setting forth an effective date, and ordering that a certified copy of this ordinance is recorded.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, I'm sorry, the staff report we get by Tabitha Perry.
Don't I have to open the public hearing first?
If you'd like.
I'm gonna open the public hearing, and then Ms. Perry can speak. This public hearing is now open. Ms. Perry, if you would make your presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. Before you, it's a request for a text amendment to the Center Line Overlay District. This overlay district was established in 2011. The purpose of the Center Line Overlay District was to encourage development and redevelopment with flexibility in the land uses as well as the development standards. As we've gone through the process, we're working with different developers. We, it was brought to our attention that we do not allow any flexibility as it pertains to multifamily. So that's the purpose of this text amendment before you this evening. Once again, we're just basically looking for a deviation to the section of the Center Line Overlay District that pertains to parking requirements for multifamily, more specifically for affordable housing and/or senior housing developments. The Center Line Overlay District... The Centerline Overlay District is bound between, excuse me, 43rd to 67th avenues between Acatea Road and Merrill Avenue, Myrtle Avenue. There's actually four character districts that is established within the Centerline Overlay District. And once again, what we're looking for, that basically if someone comes in with affordable housing, that we will allow them potentially the ability to have the parking count to be one parking, I'm sorry, 0.5 parking space to each unit. And/or they may have the ability to provide us with a justification study outlining any transit services within immediate area and how they believe their parking proposal would meet the demands of the affordable housing. This proposal for the text amendment was being compared to the UDC proposal that would come before council in December of this year. But based on the timing of proposal that we have in the planning department office that we wanted to proceed for with this text amendment, if council approves the adoption of this text amendment this evening, this text amendment would be codified within the UDC. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Tomachoff, who else had a question?
I had my hand up, but I believe.
Councilmember Tomachoff and then Councilmember Aldama.
Okay, okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Ms. Perry, is there any difference between currently, like say, a one, two, three-bedroom apartment? Do we have, I mean, don't we calculate parking based on, on the number of residents that could presumably occupy premises? Because I'm just wondering, is this half a space, no matter, even if it's a three-bedroom or two, three-bedroom apartment, it's still only a half, half of a parking space?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, currently the way the zoning ordinance is written, that for one-bedroom apartments, there's one parking space. For two or more bedroom units, it will require two parking spaces. And with every three units, it requires one parking space for guests. So the proposal and the text amendment basically states that based on the unit itself, that it will only require the .05 parking space for each unit regardless of the number of bedrooms, provided that they can demonstrate that there is transit services or other types of services that will allow the individuals living in these units to get from one area to the next area. In addition to that, the thought process is that if the developer can demonstrate, for example, that there's other commercial services in the area, like a grocery store, that they are a convenience store, that they have the ability to walk to, to obtain some of the necessities that they may need, that there's some way to demonstrate that all those components could be provided.
Vice Mayor, if I may ask another question?
Yes.
Okay, what about guest parking? No guest parking requirement?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, in the text amendment, it does not address guest parking, but the thought process is that if a developer comes in and they ask for any deviations, that we're basing it on the affordable housing and that they will account for what they perceive the needs are for guest parking as staff do the evaluation on whether or not to approve the deviation of the parking.
I mean, I understand, Vice Mayor, what the, I mean, I understand that, you know, parking spaces don't generate any revenue. I understand the reason, you know, and so in order to make these affordable projects pencil out, but I, I have in the past known, I've experienced it myself back, way back when, when I lived in an apartment and I was single, where, and I, and I know people who bought townhomes, for example, in Happy Valley and nice communities where there isn't ample, even when there's garages, that there isn't ample public parking. It can create real problems and people park places anyway where they shouldn't park. It can create kind of a hostile environment between neighbors too, because somebody who lives there can't find a parking place because their neighbor has a guest or it's just, I'm just, I understand the mathematics and why we're doing it, but I, I feel like a half of a parking space per unit regardless of the number of bedrooms and no, no amount of guest parking, I think, is, in my opinion anyway, a little bit short-sighted. I mean, I can understand reducing it down and saying a half of a space for a one-bedroom unit, one space maybe for a two-bedroom unit, and reducing down the number of requirements, but just blanketly saying a half of a space per unit, I think, can be problematic if somebody wanted to have their family over or, you know, I mean, people don't just go to work and go to the store. They have guests, they have families, they have babysitters, they have other things they're doing that require parking. And in order for them to be able to park safely and, and walk to their parents' unit or their other family member's unit, otherwise they're going to be parking out on the street and walking and having people coming through the, so I just don't know if there's, I wish we would have workshopped this, honestly, so we would have been able to have a little more of a robust discussion about, you know, what are individual probably thought processes? I'm all for reducing down the number of parking to make these more affordable, but I'm not so sure I'm on board with a half a space per unit and no guest parking at all. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Aldama.
Councilmember Tomachoff mentioned my questions. I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. If I may respond to Councilwoman Tomachoff, points are well taken. I think in the process with the, with the way the text amendment, text amendment is written, it says that staff may approve the reduction. So what it does is give the opportunity for the developers to come in, meet with staff, do the comparison, show their study. I don't think it deviates or neglects the fact that they may have to provide some level of guest parking, even though it's not called out in the text amendment, but they will have to show through their study that they are accounting for these different levels of services and parking that is necessary. So it's not a 100% that they will absolutely be able to get the reduction, but it is a tool that allows staff administratively to have some of that level of flexibility if that provides any level of clarity.
Vice Mayor, may I? Thank you.
Councilmember Tomachoff.
And I, I understand the guest parking and that's kind of an aside. It's still an issue though, but I can't, I can't imagine that, how would, how would a developer justify? Are they required? Do they just say, I, I wanted, you know, I want to do the half, half a space as long as I'm within whatever, I think it's a half a mile of a transit? And then I think, I remember there were some special accommodations if you had people with mobility issues and things like that. So, I mean, I see that's covered in there, but I still think we should, my belief that we should at least say that we, we're going to reduce it down, but we're going to, we're going to allow you to ask for a half for the one-bedroom units, one parking place for the two-bedroom. There, I think there should be a little bit more criteria than saying a half of a parking space is enough for a two or three-bedroom apartment. I think that's a real stretch and I could see, like I said, I understand the reason why the developer would want to do that, because they make no money on pavement, I get that, but I just, I, I think that we, there should be a little bit more variety of options depending on the size of the apartment. We already have that. We could still reduce it down and just have different requirements, minimums that they could ask for. I wouldn't want somebody to ask for a half of a parking space on a two or three-bedroom unit, but they're, but they can and it could be approved. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Perry, I have two questions for you. Is this Centerline proposal part of the UDC Unified Development Code?
Mayor and council, provided that council approves this portion of the text amendment this evening, it will be codified in the proposal for the UDC.
And did we, did you not say previously that if there were areas of concern by council members with the newly approved UDC, we could bring them forward for further discussion and perhaps amendment?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, that is correct, that we can come back with text amendments after the approval of the UDC.
So it is possible that one of the councilmembers here could bring that up at a future date for further discussion and possible amendment, correct?
Vice Mayor, that is correct.
Hearing that.
Vice Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Turner.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. If there's to be a deviation from the standard, who's authorized by ordinance to approve that deviation from the one and, one-two, one-bedroom standard we have?
Vice Mayor Clark, councilmembers, it would be an administrative process between planning and transportation, reviewing the justification study for approval.
So it'd be administrative, it wouldn't be part of anything that our planning commission, for instance, would review at that point?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, no, it will only be an administrative process, no public hearing process.
What would the cure be if it was found, you know, a year after a development was built, that there was an excessive amount of on-street parking that was impacting the neighbors for a, for a unit or for a development that had had a reduced parking requirement? How would we cure that later?
Vice Mayor Clark, councilmembers, as one of the questions for the justification study, that is one of the questions that we would ask about in the evaluation.
Okay, I'm not sure that answers my question, at least I didn't figure it out. So, you know, if a complex is built and it has reduced parking requirements and then, you know, after it's filled, it's, it's obvious that there's a lot of spillover parking into the adjacent residential neighborhood or in our downtown district, you know, which is where this would be, it's spilling over into commercial parking and things like that. How would we cure that problem?
Vice Mayor Clark, councilmembers, it's difficult for me to quite answer that question right now, because when they provide that study and we evaluate it, when we ask that particular question, we will look at how they would demonstrate how they can mitigate that type of concern and we will review it administratively with transportation to see if it's something that is acceptable, something that is doable in the event that the project is developed and there's an overflow of parking.
I guess I'm saying, I think it's highly unlikely that we would ask them to tear down a few apartments, much less to, you know, lock and board the doors or something like that. I don't know that we could cure it. I'm aware, and now this, for our understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, this applies to the Beach Sugar and the historic downtown character areas of the Centerline Project. Not all, not all of the Centerline, just these two character areas, probably from 51st to 59th or something. But I'm aware that in areas of my district, using the higher standard of parking requirement that we've had for years, there's insufficient onsite parking for all of the residents and their guests, and it spills into the neighborhood and causes friction. That's given the higher standard. So I'm really concerned about lowering our standard. I'm not saying it's impossible. I just, part of what concerns me is that it would be done administratively and there would really be no cure for it if the study was wrong or, or whatever. I think that Councilmember Tomachoff's suggestion that this come to workshop, unless there's some pressing issue, which I, you know, I think it ought to come to workshop and we ought to have a chance to hash this out and, and a little bit better and understand it more before we vote. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you. Two questions. The first question is, is, could we, if we elect to bring this back to a workshop, could you not bring this item along with it? Or, I'm sorry, if we come back to a workshop, couldn't you bring back this item, this text amendment, along with the UDC when we, when that comes to us? I'm not understanding why it's so important today to vote on that and then come back with the UDC in December 8th or 12th, whenever that date is the 8th.
Vice Mayor Clark, councilmembers, it is feasible for us to come back before you on the 12th of December to workshop this item, followed by potentially, if council give a consensus, to bring it back before you at the evening meeting.
I would request, Vice Mayor, if the council would approve to table this until it can come back to a workshop. We can study it further. We're studying it from the dais now and, and then also bring it back part of the UDC and we can give our, our vote then.
I, I would ask that when the time comes, you make such a motion, okay? Any further questions from council? Councilmember Malnar?
Just a couple of comments. I, I understand the concern. I know last year, the legislature, actually this year, the legislature attempted to remove our authority to regulate parking at multifamily unit locations. And they'll probably try it again. And so this may be a compromise, I don't know, but it does seem, my, my question is, how did we come up with a .5? I mean, do we have some studies or some, something that tells us that .5 is that magic number that we can go down to? If, for an apartment complex, and I agree with Councilmember Tomachoff, you know, I've, I've seen apartment complexes that allow one per unit and it is a nightmare in that, in those complexes. And now we're saying a .5, I guess, are we, are we assuming that the people that rent these units don't have vehicles at all? I mean, that's what we'd have to be assuming. And is that truly the case?
Vice Mayor Clark, councilmembers, some of the assumption from the developers is that with affordable housing, that some of the individuals that live in these units will not have vehicles, where others may have vehicles. So the assumption is that the need to have a significant amount of parking spaces may not be as great, based on market demands of what developers have found with affordable housing. So based on that information and doing some research on our own, the assumption is with a justification study, doing an evaluation, and putting the ownership on the developers to demonstrate that they will be able to provide enough parking for their clientele, was the city's approach or staff's approach of showing that flexibility within the Centerline Overlay District for affordable housing.
Okay, well, I guess that answers my question mostly. So we do have some statistics that do show that .5 is a justifiable number. Is that, I mean, the statistics came, concluded with .5? Or how did you get the .5?
Through the chair. The comparison is talking to developers and seeing what, and doing research and what other cities have done is how we came up with the .5.
Okay, all right, that, like I say, if I may, Vice Mayor, that partially answers my question, but I don't think, I don't know where this .5, I mean, somebody just pulled it, sounds like they just said, well, based on our feelings, .5 is about right. If it statistically shows that, if we've gone out and studied models that are for low income, and indeed that comes out .5, I wouldn't have a problem at all doing this. But I, I just want to make sure that we're following the statistics on it. And my last question, if I may, Vice Mayor. The, you said this, there was some urgency to do this before, is it because we're doing the UDC next week is why you wanted to do it now rather than to do it after the fact?
Vice Mayor, councilmembers, as you know, the UDC was stalled multiple times for various reasons. And because we have multiple considerations of applications for affordable housing, what council has been presented with is a lot of PADs, that a lot of the driving force of doing a PAD was to address what the parking constraints was based on the current zoning ordinance. So we identified the Centerline Overlay District as we have one project that we are in the process of approving and did an evaluation for the Centerline Overlay District, that it met the intent of what that district was supposed to serve for flexibility in the land uses and development standards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Councilmember Turner.
Thank you. This reminds me of the movie Jerry Maguire and the actor Cuba Gooding Jr. And I just say, show me the data. And I just say, "Show me the data." If we're going to be a data-driven organization, we should be able to look at the data. If there's data behind this, and we can also, you know, can we have staff go look at our existing affordable housing developments and see if they're over, if they're underparked or overparked? I want to see some data on this because, in large part because it is an incurable failure if we fail our residents at this, on this issue. So two weeks to our, what is it, two weeks to our next workshop? And seeing as this has been discussed tonight, it wouldn't kill me if we voted on it the same night because we have had some, you know, some publicity on it. You know, and if residents are watching tonight and have concerns about it, want to share their experiences with us, they can. You know, and I know there's not a developer out there that would do something, you know, that would put more money in his pocket today and leave town tomorrow, but we have to look down the road. You know, it could happen to us. And affordable housing doesn't mean substandard housing. If, you know, if we had light rail going right down through there, this would be a whole lot easier for me to support, but we don't. We do have bus line, but every road in town's got bus line, so why is it only on the Centerline? I want to see some data before you have my support, you know, and...
Further comments? Councilmember Aldama.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I agree with the council member about data because I'm not sure that it's a fact that, because you live in affordable housing, that you may not have a vehicle. So that data itself, I need to see. And then when you define affordable housing, is that multifamily affordable housing?
Through the chair, yes. We're specifically talking about multifamily affordable housing.
Thank you. What is our parking standards for market rate multifamily that's not affordable?
Through the chair, for a unit consisting of one bedroom, it's one parking space. For each unit that consists of two or more bedrooms, it's two parking spaces. And then it's three parking space, I'm sorry, there's one parking space for each three units.
Okay. So why such a deviation from that standard when we deem a project or a multifamily facility as, as affordable? That's .5, now you went from one, two, and then three, so...
Through the chair, even with the traditional multifamily developments, a lot of the developers are currently still saying, based on our current 1993 zoning ordinance, that the parking is still excessive. So that is one component that we have been evaluating in the UDC as well because a lot of developers are under the impression that that's too much parking for the projects.
So I, I get it, but if you're going to build a, whether it's market rate or if it's affordable housing, you need to have enough parking for what you think is going to occupy that building. The affordable housing, the public housing we have here in the district, by the way, there's two of them. Have you driven by there? Every parking stall has a vehicle in it. Okay, almost every parking stall. I know because I frequent the area. So I'm not convinced that because it's affordable housing that their folks may not have a vehicle. So again, I, I would request the, the Vice Mayor asked to do it during the motion, so I'll do it then. Thank you.
Any further comment? See any? Okay, thank you all very much. Any questions? Any speaker cards, Ms. Bauer?
No, Vice Mayor.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this motion? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed. Do I have a motion on ordinance number 023-55? And I would suggest that the motion include, if it is to be tabled to a date certain?
Yes, Vice Mayor. I move we table ordinance number 023-55 to date certain December 12th.
And to include a workshop?
And to have the workshop on, on December 12th. And I wouldn't mind having it on the voting meeting that night, too, but I, I think we, we need more, I need more information to be able to vote on this.
Second.
And we have a second. So we have a motion by Councilmember Tomachov and a second by Councilmember Aldama to move this to a date certain December 12th with the workshop to occur that afternoon, and it would remain an agenda item for the voting meeting that night. All right. At this point, I will take a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye on the amendment. Is that what we're voting on?
It's not an amendment, it's an, it's a motion.
Aye.
Councilmember you.
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Vice Mayor votes aye. Motion carries. It will be carried to December 12th to have a workshop, and it will be presented on the evening agenda. Now, before we move to ordinances, I promise these four employees who've been sitting here for half the meeting that when the proclamation came, we would do the proclamation. So point of order, before we go to ordinances, I'm going to read this proclamation and, and ask the city employees to come forward. And we have a bunch of them. And I want to take a minute to introduce yourselves. I know this is Sue Bredding.
Megan Sheldon.
Say again.
Megan Sheldon.
Megan.
Ben Chetapesch.
Katie Brackett.
Eileen Gunbill.
David Beard.
Thank you all for being here. And before I read this proclamation, I'm going to say this. My point of privilege. I've been on city council since 1992, off and on. I have met so many wonderful employees over the years. I can go, I can go back to the Dave Prescott days and the Paula Iliardo days. Those names that many of you who are relatively new employees never met these people and didn't know them. But I tell you this, I have never met a City of Glendale employee who didn't care tremendously about the city and its residents, and whose only motive was to do the very best that it could, that person could for the city and for the residents. Now I will read the proclamation. Whereas Glendale employees are public servants who work with professionalism, compassion, and dedication. And whereas Glendale employees are responsible for providing necessary emergency services, access to community resources, and quality amenities, ensuring roads, buildings, and intersections are built, operated, and maintained to industry standards. And city finances are accrued, utilized, and tracked efficiently and in accordance with industry standards, laws, and city policies, promoting economic growth and healthy lifestyles for employees, residents, businesses, and visitors. The licensing of both professionals and businesses. The enforcement of laws, statutes, ordinances, and policies. Safeguarding the environment for the preserving our historical and cultural resources. And whereas Glendale employees support the well-being of their communities through acts of volunteerism, charity, and compassion. And whereas residents are encouraged to share a story of their favorite Glendale employee by posting on social media and using the hashtag, hashtag Glendale Gov Love. That's a good idea. Now therefore, I, Joyce B. Clark, Vice Mayor of the City of Glendale, on behalf of Mayor Wires and the City Council, do hereby proclaim November as Glendale Employee Gratitude Month and encourage all employees to continue to improve the lives of the people we serve every day. I also ask that citizens express their gratitude to our employees for their dedication to public service by visiting www.glendaleaz.com and submitting their comments. In witness thereof, I hereunto set my hand the 7th day of November 2023. Is there anyone who'd like to speak on behalf of the employees? Come on, there must be some brave soul. Come on, Sue, you're public relations and media.
I just wanted to add that these are the Success Factors Awards winners up here.
Thank you. Okay, now after that nice break, we will now move on to ordinances. Ms. Bauer, will you please introduce item 53?
Ordinance number 023-56. An ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of Lot 1A of parcel number APN 146-18-059, located at 4705 West Glendale Avenue by the city to TWG Glendale LP, and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of this ordinance.
Any speaker cards?
No, Vice Mayor.
Councilmembers, any questions?
Vice Mayor, members of council, would you like a staff presentation on this?
Oh, you're right. Thank you, Mr. Phelps, for keeping me honest.
Ms. Jean Moreno, Director of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a request for city council to adopt an ordinance that would allow the sales, the sales of, pardon me, the sales transaction for a parcel of land that is owned by the city. This particular parcel of land has been understudied by council since approximately 2021. And we, I'm very proud to say that we are ready to bring this project across the finish line, and it will create 105 units of affordable housing in the midtown section of the Glendale Centerline Overlay District. So with this particular action tonight, we would have a 30-day waiting period for the ordinance to be effective, and then we would transact that land. It would then become owned by TWG, and they would begin the development of those units, which are much needed, obviously, in our state, but definitely in our city and in that particular area of our, of our community. With that, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Councilmember sending questions? Councilmember Tomachov.
Thank you. Maybe I don't know how, understand the wording. I didn't, and this is for Mr. Bailey, the city attorney. Is, if there is a failure to perform, does the city have a clawback on this?
Mayor, or Vice Mayor and Councilmember Tomachov? Yes, with, included within the agreement is a requirement that they perform within a certain period of time. Additionally, in addition to this agreement that the city has, they will also be under a requirement with the Arizona Department of Housing to perform under the, the state tax credit program as well. And so there are remedies in here if they do fail to perform and construct within that time period, including a repayment of the, of the discount that we have paid, plus any additional fees that we've weighed, et cetera.
Vice Mayor, if I could? I mean, and I, I absolutely believe, and I know with the tax credit, but I mean, in the event that there's a recession or there's a bankruptcy or something that happens to the developer, what happens to the land? Does it, does...
The city would be a lien holder, and we would have a lien position on the land.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on item 53, ordinance number 023-56?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I move that we approve item 53, ordinance number 023-56.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Malnor and a second by Councilmember Tomachov. I will now conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you.
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Ms. Bauer, will you please introduce item 54?
Ordinance number 023-57. An ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of warranty deeds and dedication of public rights of way at various locations throughout the city, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of this ordinance.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on item 54 and 55 is Glendale Principal Engineer Jamie Chapin.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. This is a request to accept right-of-way easements covering city infrastructure being constructed in conjunction with private development and city projects. The staff is recommending acceptance so that the city may access and maintain its facilities in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, are there any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on item 54, ordinance number 023-57?
Yes, Vice Mayor. I move we adopt ordinance number 023-57.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Tomachov and a second by Councilmember Aldama on the motion. I will now conduct a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you.
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion carries. Ms. Bauer, will you please introduce item 55?
Ordinance number 023-58. An ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the execution of a power distribution easement in favor of Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District at the Glendale Spring Training Complex, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of this ordinance.
Vice Mayor and council, this is a request to grant SRP an easement at the Glendale Spring Training Complex to cover an extension of their facilities in support of the new Dodgers Performance Lab. Staff is recommending acceptance so that SRP may access and maintain their facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmembers, any questions? Seeing none, is there a motion on item 55, ordinance number 023-58?
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Motion to approve number 55, ordinance number 023-58?
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Aldama, second by Councilmember Tomachov, to approve the recommended action. I will now take a roll call vote. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember you.
Aye.
Councilmember Malnor.
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov.
Aye.
Councilmember Turner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, the motion passes. Ms. Bauer, will you please introduce item 56?
Ordinance number 023-59. An ordinance of the council of the City of Glendale, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the sale of land by the city along the Aguafria River from Glendale Avenue to Bethany Home Road to MR Tanner Mining, Inc., and directing the city manager to execute all necessary documents for the sale, and directing the city clerk to record a certified copy of this ordinance.
Vice Mayor, members of the council, here to provide staff report on both items number 56 and 57 is Don Besler, Director of Engineering.
Thank you, Mr. Phelps. Vice Mayor, council members. This item is an item to consider the disposal of city property that city staff has reviewed and determined it's no longer in the strategic, strategic interest of the city to continue to own. On that regard, council, back last summer, authorized staff, in consistent with your policy on disposal of city property, to issue an invitation for bid. The city did that, two bids were received. The most responsive bid was with MR Tanner Company in the amount of $4.75 million to dispose of this acreage. It's along the Aguafria River corridor. It was originally purchased by the landfill and the water utility for their needs, for their facilities out in that region. Again, it's no longer determined to be in the interest of the city to continue to hold this property, and the staff recommends approving this sale agreement.
Thank you. I do have one speaker card. I do have one speaker card on this item, and the person does wish to speak, Jerry Kishiama. Please come forward. You have three minutes.
Vice Mayor and council members, my name is Jerry Kishiama. I'm an attorney. I represent ABC Sand and Rock Company and Rare Earth LLC. They were the losing bidder on this, but we believe that ABC was the most responsive bidder on this. We requested public records and were rebuffed time and time again until we finally filed a lawsuit to ask for the public records. And we got them this November 13th. That, those emails that are in that form the basis of a lawsuit we filed yesterday against the city of Glendale and the real party in interest, Maury Tanner. We really strongly oppose this. The procurement code that you have adopted in your code was not followed. All we have asked this whole time is to be treated fairly. One of the emails that I find particularly offensive said, I think from the vice, or the, the deputy city manager, said, "Well, we expect, we didn't give ABC the opportunity. We know that Mr. Tanner can't comply with the bid. We didn't give ABC that opportunity." This is what the email says. "But we know ABC is probably going to protest the bid because that's how they operate." I'm stunned and disappointed at the level of disregard of the procurement code and letters that we had sent. We had offered to buy the land because we had access, we had direct access to the land. And we were told in letters from Mr. Phelps that the land could not be sold to ABC because they had water recharge, you know, issues with it, and they wanted to keep it for that. Any piece of land, we wanted to buy, and we were willing, we made an offer of $500,000 just to buy part of it, part of it. We were rebuffed each time. The emails disclose, however, that at the same time we're being rebuffed, the engineering department is working with Mr. Tanner about buying that piece of property. So I think the lawsuit speaks for itself. I know we informed Mr. Bailey last night of the lawsuit that's pending, and, and I guess we'll just see what happens now because you did not follow your procurement code. You told us that we, we had to have everything in writing, and we did, yet Mr. Tanner, and I think one of the reasons he couldn't be the most responsive bidder, is because M. Shaw shut down part of his pit in October because of an excavation accident.
Ma'am, can you wrap it up?
I, sorry, I see the time right here. Thank you very much. But we really oppose this. We, only thing that we have asked for from day one, the way we operate, is we would like to be treated fairly. That's it, fairly.
Thank you very much. Council members, are there any questions? But I would advise you that since this is under litigation, that none of your questions relates to any such legal action.
Vice Mayor, if I may, we were told a complaint was filed, but we have not been served. More importantly, the attorney that just spoke is not even on the pleading that was filed, so I'm not sure actually who represents the entity that's complaining. But what I can tell you is, is that there, in this process, there were no bid protests at any time. And I'm available for any questions, and to the extent that we need to excuse ourselves into an e-session, I can provide legal advice at that time as well.
Thank you. I, I would.
Would you like me to make that motion?
Yeah, well, yes, I think so.
Vice Mayor, move we excuse ourselves into an executive session for legal advice.
Second.
We have a motion by Councilmember Tomachov and a second by Council, Councilmember Aldama to move into executive session for purposes of legal advice. Do I have, I guess I'll do a roll call vote just to be sure. Councilmember Aldama, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomachov, how do you vote? Councilmember you, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Turner, how do you vote?
Aye.
Councilmember Malnar, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will recess now for executive session. Right?
To the conference room.
Act 3.[142.22]